Welcome. And I feel like I need to get back in the swing of things. So we'll do a roll call, and Heath is not going to be here this evening. We have a vacancy right now in the Winterport area, so we're down one chair as a board member as well. And Lucas, of course, is enjoying his summer. Anyone else? I think everybody else is here. So we will review the minutes from our June 6 meeting. So those of you who attended that meeting, did you see any need for amendments to the meeting minutes? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
John.
Second.
Jim, second, or John?
Me.
All right. All those in favor? Any extensions? Mary Ann, and also a change for Jessica. We have no adjustments to the agenda, and so I will invite anyone who'd like to address the board to step up to the podium, introduce yourself. Okay, saying that, we'll go right on. I did want to take a moment to welcome Mary Ann and Jessica to the Board of Directors. They are our newest board members, joining us as of June, or July, I don't know what the effective date, but you're new. This is your first board meeting, so we're very happy to have you both. So we have Newburgh, Jessica, and Mary Ann represents Winterport. So congratulations on winning the election and joining us today. And Scott, I'd also like to congratulate you as well, because you're starting a new term.
Yes.
Another three years.
That's right.
But with that, welcome. And please know that if you have any questions along the way, reach out to anyone on the board, we're happy to help. So with that, personnel.
Under personnel, I have three resignations to report this evening. We have Jeff Reesbrook, Jennifer Bowman, Hannon Academy, Amanda Tilton, and Robert Spring. Also, I do want to announce one transfer, that's Sue O'Brien from the .5 Social Studies position to the district-wide instructional coach. So now we move to the nominations.
Is that a half-time instructional coach?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's...
.5 to .5. Thank you. We have three nominations this evening, plus coaches. So the first nomination is the Leroy Smith School Special Education, Melody Tracy. You can see Melody's most recent position has been at Bucksport Middle School, where she's been five years. Her salary for the collective bargaining contract, let me know, these salaries are what stands currently in the collective bargaining contract, subject to change pending our successful negotiations, hopefully in the near future. Salary is $37,850. I wouldn't doubt that Mrs. Tracy is Mr. Tracy's wife, just so you know that. So my recommendation for your endorsement this evening, Special Education Teacher Smith, is Melody Tracy. So move.
Second. Any questions from board members? Rick, is there any formal action we need to take if we hire a relative of Admin?
No, no formal action, that's why I make it...
You just have to make it known before they...
That notation, and it'll be in the minutes of the meeting. No formal action, no.
Okay, great.
There's a restriction for us, for having hours.
And I believe the superintendent.
That's correct.
Okay, I couldn't remember what the policy I wanted to say. Okay, any other questions? Great, all those in favor? Fantastic.
Okay, where's the... Actually, just... Moving to Wagner Middle School is Shelley Turnlot, Special Education Teacher. You can see she's currently pursuing a master's degree in that area. Her salary per the collective bargaining contract, $33,150. My recommendation for your endorsement, Shelley Turnlot, Special Education Teacher at the Wagner Middle School. So move.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Great, welcome.
Thank you, Mary Shelley. Moving to Hannon Academy, also Special Education, Jeff Keating. You can see Jeff has a CAS, and if you're not aware, that stands for Certificate in Advanced Study. That's a degree between your masters and your doctorate. Has significant experience next door to us, 20 years in Mountview, RSU 3. With that extensive experience per the collective bargaining contract, plus a CAS degree, Jeff's salary is $70,650. My recommendation for your endorsement, Jeff Keating, Special Education Teacher right here at Hannon Academy. So move.
Second. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Thank you. Jeff is right there, welcome Jeff.
I'll ask me. The Admin team did a great job. I was really happy to see that we have special education teachers that actually have an education experience and/or degrees, and so that's hard to come by these days, so great job recruitment, and hopefully we will retain.
Now we move to coaches, in our previous board meeting, we did the secondary level now, I bring the slate for your endorsement. You can see those people noted, the Wagner Middle School, also the Reesbrook Middle School, and also note, we still have some vacancies. So we're advertising those, and hopefully we'll secure those in preparation for the appropriate season. Normally, we do this as a slate, there's nothing that says you have to do this as a slate, you can do individually if you want, but I do ask for your recommendation of the people that are noted in the exhibit.
Make a motion, will you accept that as a slate? Second.
Great, any discussion? All those in favor? Fantastic.
Thank you. Mr. Fred, what do we have, remind us what we have for vacancies at HA, right?
We have Alpine Steve.
Yes.
For the winter, and we have freshman boys basketball.
So we're in good shape then?
Very good.
And just to note, these are posted every year.
Yes, they are.
They are one-year contracts, and there's no guarantee from one year to the next.
Thank you, Tony, that's a change we did a couple of years ago, that we do advertise them right around the early May timeframe, to allow anyone who's interested to pursue, because as Tony mentioned, they're not a collective bargaining agreement. Okay, so now we move to the greeting of the Essential Behavior Outcomes Proclamation.
Yeah, I've got to memorize. "Education enables all students to learn the skills and acquire the knowledge and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves, our schools, our community support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. Our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members."
Thank you, Tony. Given that Lucas is not here before a turn over to read, and I do have just a couple of briefings, I was on the website of Bangor Dealing News, and I printed a copy for you today. If you are interested, MCI Ballet, it's not, actually, it's not MCI Ballet, it's BRSO, how you pronounce that?
Bossa.
Bossa?
It is at MCI now, so let's not take MCI further.
That's right.
My alma mater.
They are using Hannon Academy's Performing Arts Center next week, and I'm assuming that's gone fairly well, saying that, Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to make sure you're aware of that, if you want to attend that event. Also, I did talk to Town Manager Petula today, the August 13th is the special election in the town of Winterport for our remaining board seat, and also Reagan, that's the time they're going to vote for the second time on the endorsement of the...
Water Storage Banks in Winterport.
Remember, they need to have that approved in order to bring in the grant monies that do supplement that stuff.
That's correct.
So that August 13th is an important voting day in the town of Winterport. Okay, Reagan?
All right.
A while back, we had actually thrown around the idea of hiring an event promoter, so that we could rent out the Performing Arts Center, the way Gracie did. Did that ever go anywhere, or did that kind of just fizzle? I know there's alcohol in that...
It went through some talk, and we never moved into putting any money in the budget to further that conversation, but that's a great question, and I would advocate that we become maybe more serious with that in the future.
I mean, if we have a ballet coming, they must be paying to use the facility.
They are. I think we're making, what, a couple thousand dollars, maybe something like that, but I hope, and Nick and I have talked about this over the last two or three years, I hope this is the beginning of getting opportunities.
A phenomenal facility that's...
Absolutely, absolutely. Well taken.
That's great, they're coming here, because they don't have one.
They don't have one, that's correct, that's correct.
Okay, so what you have before you today is the Budget by Warren Articles Report as we come out of 2018. As you can imagine, we have 2019, we are starting, but we're only a couple of weeks in, so we'll be bringing that first report to you on our August board meeting, so you can see a full 30 days of that. Right now, we have articles that are going to have additional funds coming out of them. Articles 1 and 2, 4 and 5, will all have accrued salaries coming out. The teacher corps have accrued salary from June through August, and we need to take that out, we have five payrolls in the summer that will be coming off of these figures. You can also see that our transportation, our debt service, and our transfer to our school nutrition program have all been completed. We do have some remaining funds, 9% in facilities management. We do still have bills that are being paid in all articles from May and June, those invoices continue to come in, and we pay those, and we'll probably be paying on 18 through August 15, about, I would say. And in the facilities line, I will say that we've had some savings this year that we've talked about through the budget process in utilities. We had all of the lighting replaced, we certainly had some electrical savings and some fuel savings this year. So it looks like we'll be coming out of the year in good shape, and we'll bring another report in August, and then again in September, so you can see how all of the articles in 2018 have finished off. Any particular questions?
The other instruction page, we've got a deficit of that, is that going to come, is it going to even out from the other ones? Because you said that's one of the ones that the payroll will come out of.
We will have to take some additional funds from that article, that's right, and we can transfer up to 5% into any one article, so we're well within those limits there.
That typically would happen in the August/September meeting, once we finalize the document comes in, so we want, advocate moving monies for this line, and it's going to cover the very question you posed.
Right. And Scott and John, do you have any extras at your end?
Yeah.
If you just put them at the end of the table, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to view a copy, please feel free.
No, no.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to move into our superintendent report, and that was included in your board packet coming into this meeting. What I'd like to do an update on is, of course, as we all know, our budget did pass this year handily, and I'd like to thank all of our communities for the support in that budget passage. I think that our workshop sessions proved to be informational, and also brought forth good discussion about what we are prioritizing in our budget, so we're certainly pleased that we can move forward and have a solid passage behind us. And moving forward with projects, we do have the turf and lighting project underway. This week alone, we are having some work going on of the turf. They are preparing for the laser grade of the turf surface, and the turf will be delivered any day now. They have already seeded all of the bases for the stadium lighting, so that is prepared to receive the poles and the fixtures that will be on those. I will say that the contractors that we're working with have been incredibly efficient, and just a pleasure to work with, making this quite easy for us. And I'd like to thank our project manager group, Cordia Corporation, they've done a very nice job with helping us to move this along. Fred and Nick, any comments you'd like to make from the ground on this?
I would agree, they've been fantastic, very professional, doing a great job.
Remind the board the due date for completion, right, is what?
The due date is August 8.
August 8.
Is it on schedule?
It is on schedule. Turf and poles are being delivered Friday, and once the groundwork is done, then it moves very, very quickly.
We can have like a grand opening.
It's been a fast three weeks here.
Yeah, we can have like a grand opening or something.
We'll have to...
I think being on the track.
...the way to do that, because quite frankly, it's so close to the start of the season, the grand opening may be the kids on the ground.
Well, I like to be there when they do that.
Hundred yard dash, maybe with the board?
Maybe.
Whoever pulls the hamstring first.
It should be noted how far gone that turf was, so much so that they elected not to recycle it to my neighbor who was looking to buy it. They said the turf that they pulled out was, it was spent. We got our money's worth out of it.
We did get our money's worth.
How many years did we have that?
14.
14 years.
So we can't buy squares of it?
Oh, I have a very disappointed son about that, I'll tell you.
That I don't know, but they won't reinstall it, because there have been talks about recycling it to another application, but...
Still think we could raise a few bucks, selling some portions of it to anybody who's ever won a state championship on it, or anyone who's, you know, any of our kids, or former, yeah. If I're a little...
Isn't that something you got to take up with the company?
Yeah, I've talked about it with Fred, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Well, one successful recycle we did get is that the poles for the lighting that were there were removed and kept in length, and were taken down to the Reesbrook Trail System, so there'll be some substantial bridge poles available for their projects on a crossing of Reesbrook, and that was a nice partnership, because they helped us move those, and it was pretty efficient.
Also, the center logo is another nice recycle.
So the center logo has been cut out, and we're going to be repurposing that on the side of the hill, so when you look up onto the hill, we'll have the old HA logo there, so that will be a nice project as well. Yeah. Good thing.
Thank you.
So we have many other summer projects underway, most notably, I think you'll see that there is excavation going on on three of our campuses. We have propane tanks being seeded at Wagner School, at Reesbrook, and at McGraw School. Those projects are all moving, and we have different aspects of each one that we're monitoring closely to make sure those go on and get done well. And we also have projects that will be coming online, we've had crack ceiling going on throughout the campus in Hannon. We'll be having speed bump removal on Reesbrook, for any of you that have traveled that way, I'm sure that you've encountered these speed bump, so we're taking care of that. We have flooring going on at three different schools, and that will be a great project at the end. And then we also have painting galore going on. And then Reesbrook Gymnasium will have a new logo and a brand-new finish that starts on Monday. So thank you to all of the summer crews, David Greener specifically, for running the crews. Really, it's remarkable what gets done in a matter of weeks, and it's just due to the dedication of everyone who's on board. And then I'd like to tell you about a unique thing that we did. We had Playground Evaluation Team come out from Liberty Mutual, who is our liability insurance provider. They sent, I believe, five representatives from their company to meet with a team of RSU 22 folks involved in playgrounds, and they gave us a presentation about playground safety maintenance and expectations for standards, and then we walked playground sites and evaluated them. And from that, it really did a nice job of giving our team some insight about what level of maintenance we should be doing, where investment should be made, where the priority should be over time, and we're making a considerable investment in our elementary playgrounds from that evaluation, so that those orders are in already for pieces and parts, and we're making a significant woodchip purchase, because woodchip flooring is really a key to safety on playgrounds.
Oh, God. Concluding the report.
Thank you, Karen.
Do we have any questions of board members?
Is there particular safety concerns that were noted by Liberty Mutual, other than a lack of woodchips?
There are places where the woodchips get dug out because of use, you know, you're kicking out at the swings, or where you land off of a pole repeatedly, and so they've talked to us about the way the maintenance should be done and those items measured. They gave our playgrounds pretty high scores in comparison to places that they go. As far as how we meet standards, our equipment has been well-maintained, but there were certain pieces where they wanted us to look at how we might have certain bolting that needed to be looked at again, or footing for certain equipment, so we've gone ahead and made the purchases to fix those items.
Any other questions of board members?
Hey, one for Jen. On behalf of parents and teachers of Weatherby, when will we get our letters?
You should have them at the end of the week.
Okay.
Yep, where the team is coming in tomorrow, stuffing our final envelopes, they'll be mailed out this week.
Thanks.
So we have a candidate that we'll be bringing forth to you.
We do.
In August.
In August. I was hoping for tonight, but...
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I was actually thinking it might be...
We will prematurely send that letter, so people will know.
Awesome, thanks.
We'll have a number of nominations for you in August, Chris.
Yes. Any other questions, John?
The legislature, do they appropriate $600,000 for health centers?
Yes.
So what does that mean for us, anything at all, or...
Well, I have a few people that are going to be looking into that, I'm drawing a blank right now, Mr. Raymond might be involved in that this morning. Okay, Nick? Excellent, no worries, is Brittany here? And, no, okay. Nick, can you speak to that briefly?
I think what we had talked about was that that was for existing health centers.
Is it? Okay.
Fine print, yes.
Well, I was hoping, that's why I asked people to look into it, John, I was hoping that we could use it to seed again.
Restart.
Restart.
How much money is there? Because there's only probably like two or three in the state.
10.
There's not?
That's what this parent told us this morning.
Yep.
And Brittany and Barbara were supposed to be meeting with you at some point.
Okay, good. I'm glad you asked that, though, because I was hoping that that would serve us well. We won't give up on that, because I think I've shared publicly with the board that that's one of my biggest disappointments in my career here, is the loss of the Skoue Bay South Side.
But $600,000, what across 10, is that?
That's right, yeah. So we'll continue to look at it, John.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, good question.
What defines a health center, as opposed to say, a nurse's office?
Well, basically, you would have, you would have a doctor on site. In our case, we had a doctor that equated to one day a week here, wasn't it one day?
One day a week, yeah.
One day a week here, and that doctor was sent out here by Eastern Maine Medical Center, that doctor was employed by Eastern Maine Medical Center. Students were available to see the student, but we didn't basically get the participational of the bottom line. Out of 745 students, we typically, maybe in a given week, might see five to 10 students. My personal goal for that was to then have that become also advantageous for employees, and selfishly, but I want to be transparent, is I was hoping that we could do that to drive down our health insurance costs to our district. So we'd have healthier people, you'd have a PCP rate here in the site, but because, the issue that we ran into is because Eastern Maine Medical Center was paying the bill, the bill was running through the hospital, and a lot of people actually had a higher fee to pay the doctor at Hannon Academy than they actually did go into their PCP across the street from my office at the Hannon site. And we couldn't get that rekindled, if you will, to get that resurrected, and so it basically, unfortunately, died on its own, 12, 13, 14 months, we had approximately there. And then we got Dr. Razcheck a number of times, the chief medical officer at the hospital, and, I mean, he was very willing to keep it going for a while, but after a year, we lost about 75, they lost about 75, $80,000 on it. So the simple answer is you'd have a physician on site at designated time.
Rick, I think when you look at that again, I think you could look at some on the Intell Health Services for that exact thing.
So we'll try to bring it back. I had, one time, five or six years ago, we had a conversation with PCHC, and they actually run the Brewer one, that got off the dime on a grant, but those grants went away as well. I mean, years ago, I'm going to make this up, I'm going to be pretty close, 10 years ago, there were like 85 school health coordinators in the state, 85. I realized about six years ago that money was going to go by the wayside, so what I did in the budget, I put 20% of the salary in the budget each year, so over five years, we then moved the money into our budget, and that's why we have Brittany Layman's position, because we were able to support that in district fund money versus the tobacco settlement monies of 2008 or '09 and through there. That's what subsidized school-based health centers and school health coordinators as well. But those monies are all gone. I'm actually glad you asked that question, I'm going to divert a little bit, but hopefully relevant here. I had the opportunity last week, I'm on the legislative group for the National Superintendent Association, I too was in DC, I didn't have a chance to tour too much, but let me give you two or three tidbits that are very, very concerning to me. Number one, they're looking to eliminate Title II monies. That's money that Mary GR oversees to professional development for our teachers. How much money a ballpark per year is that, Mary?
$75,000.
$75,000. They're looking to eliminate Title I, if not eliminate, drastically reduce by at least 50%. As, for example, Mrs. Morris School and Wagner School are Title I schools, that's where your literacy specialists, reading recovery teachers, that's where that's subsidized. So I thought of that, because that might be similar to Brittany's position eight years ago, where we need to start planning for that. Most profoundly, though, at the national level, they're looking to merge the US Department of Education and the Department of Labor.
Who's they? Is this the Department of Education? Who's they? You keep saying they.
I don't know who they is, but I did have the chance to go to Susan Collins' office, I didn't get a chance to talk with her, because she was dealing with the nomination of the Supreme Court, but we did talk with their clerks, and the administrators at the national level, whoever they are, they're promoting the merging of those two departments.
Education and labor, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
So those are three or four very, very significant things at the national level that we need to keep our eye on.
Can you back up a little bit more? That was really fast. Can you explain a little bit again? What Title II?
Title I and Title II monies are federal monies that flow to us.
Right.
Title II is basically money that Mary oversees to provide professional development opportunities for our teachers. So it's basically a supplemental fund that supplements our RSU 22 monies. Title I money is primarily used for faculty at the Smith School and Wagner School for literacy and reading recovery teachers, Mary Ann, are subsidized by that. You have to be a Title I school, based on your socioeconomic structure of your community. Hamden is not a Title I school, or Hamden School. Newburgh used to be, when it was open for pre-K through 5. So basically, those are monies that supplement RSU 22 monies. If they were to go away, to make it simple, let's just round it up, let's say that's $500,000. That $500,000 and the programs associated with that, that had to be brought into the school district budget.
Was Frankfort a subbing?
I'm going to guess.
Yes.
And so we're getting their monies too, then?
No, because they're with us.
Yeah, they're with us.
They're part of us.
So that, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse with that, but just be aware, those are very significant issues that I'll keep you abreast of at the national level. And I don't, I'll find out who the they are, too.
Yeah, well, they, I mean, that's typical in education, they say, and you want to know who they is. Is it the Department of Education? Is that something that Betsy DeVos is in charge of, and that we should be really contacting her about our disagreement with getting rid of Title I and Title II funds, or is that they, somebody else?
Well, the main schools superintendent association, and their legislative group is already in conversation with our group at the national level. But the US Department of Education Secretary also, as you know, came from the private sector. They're also looking to flow some monies that now go to public schools into private schools and vouchers.
Right.
Is that...
That's what the they is, that's a problem.
I'm wondering with the idea of eliminating it, why eliminating those funds?
Don't know, we'll have to see that in the draft, in the advocacy system.
Maybe they're going to put that money somewhere.
It will be a money shift, too.
Right.
I mean, for new board members, and I'll keep you updated on this, but at our own state level, Mary Ann, just for your information, they're looking to modify significantly the existing school funding formula. In other words, the EPS formulas, I've known it for now 10 years, Central Development Services, is going to be a thing of the past, and we do not know with any anticipation what it's going to look like. You've also heard me probably say too many times about the CDS component coming in under the public schools umbrella, and where's the money going to come from? So there's a lot of changes that would be similar to the ESSA Act, replacing the Old Child Left Behind.
Just in terms of communication for the board, a lot of acronyms, if we can break out some of the acronyms, to what they're CDS being.
Thank you, Scott. Child Development Services, thank you, thank you. That's very important, people will follow me on that. So my basic summation is, we need to be aware of the potential changes, more than likely changes, that will happen at the national and state level in the very near future.
Well, that was...
Well, that was.
I didn't mean to go that far, but that was a good question.
I'm glad you answered that.
We'll slow that down, Mr. Raymond.
No, I'm just gonna assume this is Jill Mottwater.
That is maybe a double, we're.
Are there any other questions from board members?
There is.
Okay.
It's related to one of our policies.
Yes.
A question I would like to ask is pursuant to JIH-RF. So my question to superintendent lines is, have you received and/or provided approval for requests for assistance from ICE or CBP agents?
No.
In the last six months or so?
Not to my knowledge, no, I have not.
Okay, nothing has come across your desk?
No.
Okay, it's a two-part question.
That's okay.
Have you received any requests from ICE or CBP or a law enforcement agent acting on their behalf for information about or access to any of our students?
I'm gonna ask my administrative team if my member doesn't serve any, my answer to that is no.
Thank you.
Mary Anne actually gave me heads up that she's gonna ask it, and I appreciated that, because I know this has been something that's been very important to many people. We did, the, the regulation, Mary Anne is noting, we did actually modify that this past March, because the board members that are on the board, remember, we had the resolution that came to us and we talked about extensively. As a result of that resolution, we, we took that to the policy committee and this work and the regulation Mary Anne just referenced. Also, I pulled out the policy, because as you know, policies have regulations. And I wanted to make one comment in response to Mary Anne's question, that, matter of fact, let me just read a little bit the entire board. To maintain a safe and orderly environment in the schools, administrators are authorized to search students' personal belongings and property owned to the district. Students have no expectation of privacy while a school grounds or its school sponsors activities. The key part of the whole policy is three words, with reasonable suspicion. So if we have reasonable league, administrators are authorized to do what they need to do to protect the integrity and the climate of RSU 22 schools. So that's a good question, Mary Anne, thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
I do, I have a, a community member who is absolutely thrilled with the breakfast and lunch program at the Smith School. She says that is an absolutely wonderful thing to provide the community. She did have a question about where the funding came from for that. And her biggest concern, though, was are we reaching the children most in need? Can they get there?
Yeah, good question. I'm gonna put Mrs. Moore on the spot, I'm gonna give her 10 seconds of think time. Kathy Kittredge, who's our food service director, I excuse her for the meeting tonight, because she didn't be able to answer our question, Mary Anne, because her sister is with her for a long period of time, but leaving tomorrow, so I did not have her here. So, Dawn, did you hear Mary Anne's questions?
Yes, I, I can't tell you, I think it's federal funding, but you have to be a certain amount of free and reduced lunch to qualify.
Correct.
The second part to your question, are we meeting everyone in need? We have, we are trying everything we can to get the word out, and I know Kathy has talked about setting up a station somewhere else. There are very strict guidelines on what she can and can't do, and how they can count and can't count children. So I know she's been really doing a lot of exploring, because she's, she's very frustrated as well that it's not reaching everyone it needs to. So we're continuing to work on that.
I'll have her come to the board meeting in the near future to give an overview. Matter of fact, Matt Tardy, our director of adult ed, is gonna be with us on August 1, because he's gonna announce, I shouldn't be presumptuous on this, but he's invited a surrounding school district to join us, and we think that's gonna happen, to give us greater opportunities for our adults to take adult ed classes. Also, he has now replaced the Bangor school system, providing adult ed in the jail. And he's very excited about the potential there, and he'll better help explain that than I can do by just announcing that tonight.
So, I, I, just a follow-up, is there a way I can get a copy of what those guidelines are for that program?
I believe you probably could go right online and find them honestly, but.
Or check with Kathy Kittredge, who's our food services person.
Mary Anne, email me, and I'll pass it on to Kathy Kittredge, who is the director, I'm sure she has that.
And we, we were wondering if it was even gonna occur this year, because it depends, again, on your numbers. We wondered if we, it would even happen again this year, we had it last summer. And so it's not something that we can necessarily count on every summer.
Right, okay.
I'll give you one more, then I'll be quiet for the night, but that's, I wanna share, I had a question asked of me that I haven't had, asked about a month ago. We have a person in our district that wanted to use one of our kitchens to make food that he sells at farmer's markets. So he wanted to use a kitchen to make food that he sells at farmer's markets. So I think a long story short, Kathy, I thought, I received a letter from the Department of Health and Human Services on Friday that said, no, you can't. Those are sanitary issues, they're the public school issues, and so on. And this is the Newburgh Elementary School, by the way. So I talked to the town manager today, and the question the town manager had from this person was what happens when the Newburgh Elementary School is no longer owned by RSU 22 and 2021? Because the intent is, in 2021, you're going to, for $1, give the school to the town, if the referendum passes. We're gonna talk about that today, and here's a little history lesson. You cannot close a school unilaterally. By law, somewhere in probably January, February, March of 20, or the fall of 2021, we'll have a question with the town of Newburgh. Do you choose to close your elementary school? If the answer is yes, then we can sell the school to the town for a dollar. If the answer is no, we can't close the school. So we'll hear more about that as months come by. So I just thought you'd find that interesting, an interesting question that I didn't even think of. But with that, I'll stop for the deal review there. Thank you, Karen.
Yep, any other questions?
Can I ask one more?
Sure, Mary Anne.
I have a bunch, of course, I'm new, so I hope I make a good question.
Save them up, so you have something to say next?
I just, I went over the strategic plan, and my, my curiosity question is, how often is that reviewed? When was the last time it was reviewed? There are a lot of question marks on it, and there are some blanks, blanks.
The answer is annually, and I believe the last time we did it was October or November of just.
It took a long, it occurred over several months, because Tim, remember, Tim was coming in?
Yes, yeah.
So I don't think we actually really even finalized that until May or June.
Yeah. So we'll have to discuss that in one of the upcoming meetings, because in the past, we've done it annually, Mary Anne. You're welcome.
We are not helpful. Not on that one, we, you might want to do our homework. It seems like it was just yesterday, but I think it was a few years ago. Yeah, I mean, we're.
It just took us longer.
We're due to.
Yes, this follows you.
Due to, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll move into committee reports. Do we have anything from the finance committee, he's not here, so are we gonna ask you?
No, we don't.
Okay. Budget committee, I think we're good with that.
That's great.
Athletic committee, again, he is not here.
We have a man.
How does that? Turf, moving on. Building committee, Alan. We're all taking the summer, enjoying it, it's good. Education committee, Amanda?
We did not meet today, or I didn't show up this week.
We didn't meet.
I didn't go.
John, any policy committee update, other than what's going to be discussed for consideration?
The only thing to note is that at our last meeting, the committee discussed the procedure to consider a student, a student rep on the board, and we removed the sentence, students who are, whoever, parent who works in the district or on the board, we've taken that out, because we really had the discussion, didn't feel like there was a conflict there.
Okay.
So we removed that sentence, so it's gonna be in that, that update would be in the procedure.
Okay.
Did we skip negotiations for a reason?
Um, yeah, we have an executive session.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry.
No, no.
I shouldn't have said that. The UTC? Behavioral review in what phase?
Are we gonna be meeting with any of the students we met with again this summer? Or are we just gonna leave that?
We're supposed to. Yeah, I think, Mr. Raymond, we had a student from AJ, if I recall, we were gonna meet in the middle part of August.
Yes, there was a meeting on that individual at the tail end of the year. We should be getting a report coming up, I would say in the next few weeks.
Okay, so we're.
Then duck tail will get that.
So the committee needs to do that on Wednesday?
Uh, we do have an edu- education foundation for RSU 22, and currently, we do not have a board representative. Love, we've been, I've been asking for one, for volunteer, for some time now. So I don't know if Jessica or Mary Anne might have an interest in joining that foundation, but it's a great opportunity for us to collaborate with the foundation, to see where we might be able to partner and bring in additional funds and supports from the community, and also where we can support the foundation, and we just haven't had that link yet. So they meet once a month, and if you think you might have an interest, let me know. Of course, I'm opening, again, to the full board as well, but wanted to kind of put that carrot out to our newest members.
Where would I find information about its mission, its?
They have a website.
They, they do.
Yeah, RSU 22 Foundation, Education Foundation, but I can find the link, Mary Anne, and I'll send it to you. And also the lead contact, which is Peter and what's his?
Peter Whit.
Peter Whit, thank you, I should go back. Do you have an update for this person?
We have not met.
Okay, wellness committee, I'm assuming hasn't met, and community relations.
We did not meet this month.
You didn't meet on July 3rd, I was really disappointed in you.
Yeah, right? My wife wasn't.
What's the, what's the SPRS board? Is that an acronym?
Yes, it is an acronym.
It is an acronym.
We live in a world of.
Southern Penobscot Regional.
Come on.
Program, I don't know. Children with Exceptional Needs.
Very good.
Program of Children with Exceptional Needs. Other, I otherwise know it's the Bangor Regional Program, I don't know if you've heard that. That's what I know it as.
And what is that group doing?
So that group, um, so they run a, a, an off-site program off, like, they have their own campus, and they serve children with exceptional needs, both behavioral and physical exceptional needs, who are, those children are all IEP'd to that, or which means Special Education Plan to that program. How do I do?
That is good.
All right, we'll go right into policy considerations, John?
Sure, um, we have policy JLCD immunization students. No changes from the first reading, which was a law change, so I'm looking for a motion for approval of the second reading and adoption.
Motion for approval of second reading and adoption of policy JLCD?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all those in favor? Were there any opposed?
Uh, the second one, I was gonna lean on Wally, I think, first, with the CBI.
So this was for second reading. Last time, we had brought this for first reading, we talked about the budget, and we talked about sort of changing the timeframe, and when we went back to the policy committee and we talked with Rick about the timeframe and negotiating contracts with the superintendent, we opted to keep the same timeframes. Uh, the way Rick explained it is, generally, when we're negotiating, we're negotiating for the following year, not that current budget that we're working into, is that correct, Rick?
That's correct.
Uh, so we thought we'd stick with the same timeframe when we brought it back for second reading. And then there was a typo that John caught, what, this morning?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. I gotta get back to the right screen. On. The first page, number one, at the first meeting in December and May, and I tried to remove all of those at the first meeting, since we meet once a month. So probably striking that out during the December and May meetings.
Wally, if you don't mind, I would ask for Mary Anne's benefit and Jessica to explain the red line scenario, because we're in a different, non-traditional.
Sure. So the, the last few years, we've been going through doing superintendent evaluation, and it's been very different for this board, because Rick has been in with a locked contract for a five-year timeframe, because he retired and then came back. So there is, there has not been any negotiation of salaries. The salary is set, there's no changes, so we review the evaluation and then meet with Rick and go over it. In anticipation of Rick's full retirement coming soon.
Two years.
Uh, two years. We thought we would start looking over the regulation for the evaluation of the superintendent and revamp that, and then try to add some more language to make sure that future board members understand the process and where to go. And then also, in the pack, it is the new evaluation tool that we developed along with, to go along with the regulation. Did I capture that good?
That's good. I think the key part that is normally, as Wally pointed out, is when I'm, when the superintendent's evaluated in the March, April, May timeframe, I, I receive one evaluation from the board. Now I take that and negotiate a subsequent contract with the ad hoc committee, and then that comes back to the board. Since we did that in October 2015, that's never happened, and won't happen until 2020, when you have your new superintendent. But that's a very important part. I think if you're all informed of a board member, one of the most important things you do as a board is hire the superintendent. Maybe one could argue the most important thing, because that's your CEO. So you're going to be, you're going to be confronted with that, because this district has not done that for 27 years. So that's a major, major responsibility that you need to be looking, hopefully, forward to the next 17 or 18 months here.
Wally, I have just one question. When I was going through this, I was on that committee, so. Number 10, when it talks about, um, both bodies should prepare, and it said, in addition, the superintendent's schools will handily develop and present a district status report on board goals. Now, is that the strategic plan, board goals? I mean, I, I'm, I'm sitting down making board goals. Is that our strategic plan? What?
The, the district report is something that, that Rick does.
He's done, yep.
Every year.
Right.
But if you switch over to the evaluation.
Right.
At the end of the evaluation is four boxes for the superintendent to set their own goals, then it'll be reviewed in that December timeframe, and then again, at a school year timeframe.
Right, but that, and I knew that, but the board goals just went through me. School, handily develop and present a district status report on board goals.
This is the board, I think, sets the goals with the superintendent, correct?
No, he sets his own. On the new evaluation, that new report, he sets his own goals, but this says board goals, and I just wasn't clear.
Yeah.
I think the board goals do come from the strategic plan, which was my thought, but I'm thinking we maybe should write that, because we don't ever say the strategic plan, we don't call those board goals, we call them the strategic plan.
Yeah, and there's no red in that one, so I didn't edit that one at all, I was so focused, I think, on the timeframe.
Right, yes, and that makes sense, but when I was rereading this, that was just not clear.
That's a good question, that's a good one.
That is a good question.
So maybe we bring that back to the policy committee.
Can we do that and kind of look at some of this piece of it?
Make sure it's clear.
Well, we even, I mean, we spent so much time on the other part of it, you didn't really spend a whole lot of time on this. Some of it, I actually think we don't need anymore, because of what's in our new evaluation. I would like to revisit this. Sure.
Sure. Maybe we can bring that back to the policy committee meeting later this month, and then bring it back in August.
And the second reading with the revisions.
I would just add that in the, in the CD, or E, which we're gonna look at next, I assume, at the end, when it talks about superintendent goals, they're gonna be developed and agreed upon.
Correct.
So that is, that is gonna be the back, it's not going to be a superintendent selecting his or her goals, they'll be agreed upon. So the board is gonna have a say in, in the goal.
Right, but they're not goals for the board, they're the goals for the superintendent.
Right.
Right, and this is alluding to the fact, develop and present a district status report of board goals, not of, not of superintendent goals.
Which is what historically we did, we did the strategic plan, which is.
That's what I did too.
I, I don't, I, I think that you should say then the board goals for the superintendent.
Yeah, it's not, it's not clear, I think we need to replay.
So let's take it back, and then in August and September, when you guys are able to meet, we'll bring it back for second reading. And we have right now in that policy committee, John, Joe, and Wally, right?
Yep.
All right, great, um, and so with that, we'll go to the, um, old business regarding the major capital school construction programs.
I gave you a lot of information here, we don't need to spend any time on it tonight, but what Ricky and I are going to be doing is we're gonna be putting this on the next building committee agenda. The purpose of it was to basically show you how they assess each of the schools, give you the rating of all 70, what was it, 70 some schools in state of Maine. As you know, McGraw King, 20, what it became in 62 out of the 74. So we'll go over this with the building committee, but I'll just make one very key point. You're basically at step, we are basically at step four or five. A critical decision for the board to consider is, when do we want to hire an architect and engineer to help us think what the rest of the things are gonna be filled in at? So, for example, are we looking for a new school or a renovated school? So someone, uh, that's an expert at this would help us, uh, facilitate this. So tonight, I just want you to be aware of the, uh, the matrix of each school's rating, and also what the, what the department refers to as the 21 magical steps, to go from, when you had the public vote yes, to all the way, and I was thinking about this coming in tonight, six years ago next month, when we opened this school. It took us 18 years, 18 years, when they handed the academy your city, and go from step zero, step 21. So this is not something that will happen overnight maybe, which is a key part tonight. This will be something that will happen over many years. Okay? So basically, it's just to show you, uh, graphically, where we are, what the next steps are. Uh, step seven, for example, is a key one, Ed, Ed, Ed Specs. What's the school gonna look like? For example, as you heard me say, my opinion, are you gonna connect the two schools with a large corridor that's gonna have multiple classrooms? Are you gonna have another gymnasium? Are you gonna have a performing arts center? You need to talk about how the educational services will be delivered in the new school, and that's when you have to then talk about, are we gonna then select and advertise for an architect and engineer to help us that? Much like when you build a home, you have to have a plan to build from. So this will give you, hopefully, it gave you a good summation as to where we are and where we need to go, and that'll be on the building committee agenda. Anyone have any questions on the surface tonight, Joe?
Looking into this for both Handen and Winifred? Looking at both sets of schools here, or just Handen?
No, this'll be just the McGraw-Weatherby school.
Oh, okay.
Was the McGraw, so I guess I do have a question.
Yeah.
That was the McGraw that ranked higher, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, and then Weatherby was like 60 something?
62. You have the list, you have the complete list from the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the likelihood that we would be able to do things that touch Weatherby, knowing that they rank below 20, the top 20?
Okay. This is what, I don't wanna elaborate too much, but the key part of this is you don't know what's gonna happen, because there's one in 19 above you. So for example, number one, I think, was Fairfield School, right? So let's say Fairfield Primary School develops their plan, and they go to the voters, the voters, voters vote it down. Now your position's number 19. What happens if 10 schools above you fail? Now all of a sudden you go from 20 to 10. That is the first critical question. The second critical question is, how much money in the bank do they have to spend? So let's, let me make up $100 billion. Let's say, the, the top three schools, there's only one high school above us, which is good, because Sanford High School Tech Center right now is $102 million. One school could take the bulk of the monies. So you spent your monies in probably just one, two, or three, and we're sitting at 12. Okay? Now, to bore, to really bore you, that happened here. Scott's laughing, I probably told him the story too many times. That happened here. We missed it by four slots, and we, we lobbied the legislature to put more money in the pool. That's how Handen Academy came about. So there's a lot of unknowns here. So, but in summation, what are the people in front of us going to do, or their community's going to do? And we'll talk over the next months with the building committee to keep you updated, because some of these schools will be going to referendum shortly. Shortly, maybe like in probably the next year or two.
And if McGraw was, let's say, got to the number one slot.
Yeah.
Are we required, because McGraw's K to three, K to two, sorry, are we required to rebuild a K to two, or could we build a K to five with that?
That gets back, that gets back to your Ed Specs, that gets back to your architect. The architect's gonna help us decide that. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna say, we have McGraw School at number 20, and Weatherby's at 62, but we're gonna merge them together. Let me pick on Old Town, that's exactly what Old Town would do, and that, that's what Brewer would do. Brewer took the four or five elementary schools in those communities, closed them all, and built one.
Yeah.
So we might, example, only an example to the public, we might say, we're gonna demo one of those schools and add on to Weatherby, for example. Or we're gonna combine the two schools, and make them a pre-K through five school. So that's where the imagination and creativity comes in, and the brainstorming comes in, then we advocate what we want, but you need to have an architect and engineer to help you think that through and design that. I mean, I'm looking at Mr. Raymond, I think he was here, when we talked about building Handen Academy on-site, we had a lot of public pressure from people that graduated from HA to build on-site. The problem is, Anheuser River, graveyard, and Route 1. Believe it or not, we actually called the company in California that owned the shopping center at the time, because the board was thinking about buying the shopping center.
Yeah.
So those examples hopefully just illustrate to you, how creative can you be to answer that question, what will this school look like? The good news is, you're rated number 20, so you're fairly close. I have no idea how far the money will go, but you only have, I think there was one high school in Portland above us. Yeah, Mary Ann?
I just had a question, when you begin to explore all of that, is there, do you, and did you part, did you as part of the HA process, um, reach out to the community?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Number 15 is Portland High School. What we did, and how many of you anyone can remember, we had weekends called Values in the Village, or something like that, on a Friday night, Saturday morning. We invited community members, and typically on the Friday night, Saturday morning, at Handen Academy cafeteria, we had 75 to 80 people come in and give us ideas on what they thought the new Handen Academy would look like. When we had a pretty good idea of what we thought it would look like, we brought, I remember my children had the Lego blocks in, and we took the Lego blocks and we entered, had that mentor woman or whatever say, okay, this is gonna go here, this is gonna go here. And that's actually how the alternative ed program came to be in this building, because remember the alternative ed program with the old HA was across the street, but those students wanted to be a part of the building, they wanted to be on the end of the building where they are. So we had major players giving a major amount of time to talk about what they envisioned Handen Academy look like in 2012. It's a lot, it is a lot of work. This is a lot of work, uh, and it's a lot of time. It's not something that we, okay, we're number 20, we're gonna be done in two years.
Yeah, well, Portland Public School, High School's ahead of us.
Yeah, that's right, so there you go.
They're gonna take all the money.
So anyway, just, and the building committee will keep you being informed over the next year or two, as we, as we go along. Okay? If you have any questions, once you've kind of sit and look at this, by all means, give me a call or send me an email, but hopefully, at least you'll see the schematic overview as to how it flows for us, and where we are positioned statewide. The other thing, now stop, the other thing is, they may, uh, open up the applications in two years, and we reapply, so we move from 20 to 2. Then the conversation changes. Thank you.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll.
You're, you're still up, you're still up.
I'm still up, going into new business?
We're going into, um, yes, we're going into new business.
Okay, so the background to the new business for administrators is, on an annual basis, the administrators are evaluated either by their, uh, supervisors, such as Mr. Tracy with the athletic director and, and assistant principal, or the superintendent, then I'm the most direct supervisor. All people have been, uh, reviewed, have, uh, established goals, which is done on an annual basis. At this time of year, I would bring the slate to you for your ratification endorsement, as you can see by each person, what their salary is, the percentage, and the length of contract, and the workdays. I will add that I think we should stop, just for a moment, and be reflective and appreciate the administrative team that we have. I was trying to think about 20 minutes ago of a word I could use here, so I'm gonna be careful with this. I think our administrative team is, is, um, a mature team, but a fairly young team. I'm trying, I'm trying to send the message that we're not looking at a large number of people retiring in the next three or four years. That's a significant plus. I can tell you, at the commissioners' conference, um, there were a number of people that approached me, primarily from the southern part of the state. If you read the Portland Sunday Telegraph, Sanford, Scarborough, Yarmouth, Cape Town, they are begging for administrators in those districts, begging might not mean the right word, but they're, they're not flourishing in administrative, um, positions like they were five and 10, 15 years ago. We have an excellent, strong, cohesive administrative team, I hope over the next few years continues to deliver an educational excellence to RSU 22. As you all know, we had three new administrators this, this current year, and many of you have served on those committees, and I think we brought in three powerful people to really augment and supplement the people that we had here, uh, some for quite a few years and some for more. So I think we're very blessed to have people that are really dedicated to our district to make excellence, uh, even a, a greater brand for RSU 22. So again, these people have been evaluated, established goals, and would ask for your endorsement of the people that are in the corresponding exhibit.
Sue Moore.
Second. Okay. Any questions, discussion, Scott?
Yeah, why is, um, Richard Glen Cross at 3.86 while everybody else is at 3.84?
I wanted to bring Richard up a little bit more in sour, because he was hired at a lower, uh, uh, entry point, Scott, and also, Richard's doing a nice job, and I felt it would be very, uh, reasonable to bring him up at that level. Scott, I'm actually glad you asked the question. The other thing that I would add, hopefully I'm doing this precisely, the landscape for administrative positions has changed from a monetary perspective. In other words, administrators now are seeking, and asking, and demanding, and rightfully so, getting salaries that we probably weren't thinkable five years ago, because the supply and demand in 2018 is so different than it was 2010. So Richard, I may, I'm gonna pick on Don Moore, I mean, Don started seven or eight years ago, salary was a little low, so you have to adjust those salaries over the years, because the Don Moore may be at $85,000, and we hire Johnny Jones coming in from another district, experienced in the same position, making $15,000, all of a sudden you do, you have an imbalance. So I need to look at the recruitment and retention of people, plus the performance, I may, I may adjust that simply because where they compare to their peers in the district, because of other variables, Scott, and that's what happened with Richard.
Mary Ann?
Oh, sorry. That does bring up a question that I had, again, out of ignorance, um, is there a rubric of some sort that you use?
Yes.
When you are hiring?
When we're hiring?
And, and in terms of the salary?
Not when I'm hiring, Mary Ann, probably the rubric that I use is, where is the person coming from? Are they coming from another administrative position, or are they coming from a teaching position? Are they coming from a private school? Are they coming from the private sector? I also have the, uh, the salary of every administrator in the state, so I might take a look at school districts compiled hours, size-wise, or socioeconomic-wise, and see that. The other thing I have to do is compare it to the Bangor Brewers, because that's using our guiding principle of teacher negotiations and so, so how do I compare those? The work year, notice the work year are high school people's year-round, our elementary people, and reduce, so you have to look at that as well. So it's, it's a number of things that you look at in the hiring process. Once hired, though, you get back to Scott's question earlier, then how do they interface with people in your district? But probably equally important is, what's the person's performance? Administrators are not a collective bargaining group, they're individual. Uh, they've never been a collective bargaining group, so I'm dead here. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, Bangor is a collective bargaining group, so it's, it's a different question in Bangor, because you have to negotiate that. We have the autonomy here, the superintendent has the autonomy, to judge the person's performance, and therefore the compensation, the tenure, the contract, based on his or her performance to you folks. And if in life, things don't work out for a particular person, then you go down that road, which unfortunately I've had to do in my career.
I did just notice there is a fairly large gap between the lowest and the highest.
There is, there is, I'm not gonna name people, but let me just make up names. Let's say John Jones comes to our district having served as a principal 15 years in Timbuctoo. Suzie Q is running our district two years. Now all of a sudden, you have 13-year difference in experience, similar to a teacher. So then you do have that disconnect, getting back to Scott's question. Richard came to us, where's Richard?
Ready.
Richard came to us, uh, from, remind me, Richard, where were you?
I was in Ellsworth, then I was at MTR.
Yeah, but didn't have a, a, a depth and breadth of administrative experience, we hired him as a new administrator. Jen Seer, sitting right in front of me, Jen came from Old Town, where she was a principal already. Mr. Tracy came to us as a high school principal in Bucksport, say, so the landscape is entirely different with every single one of them. So what happens when I, when I finalize that with that person, I meet with them, and we hopefully come to an agreement on what are they recommended to the board?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amanda, did you have a question?
I did, and I know I should know the answer to this, um, how do you decide how many days, workdays are with each position?
I'd say, given the magnitude and the scope of the job, more than usual, the secondary administrative positions are truly year-round because of the, of the response of the high school setting with scheduling, hiring, et cetera, athletic fields, and so on. Most middle school principals are around a 250, elementary is around 240, just given the magnitude of the difference between an elementary, middle, and high school principal, you have to manage that. So they're pretty, I'd say they're pretty common statewide, I think all high school ministries, most of them are 260, your middle school, 250, it's pretty common.
260 is usually the highest.
Can't go above 260.
Oh, you can't go above?
That's it, every day of the week, they're working. Doing it 60 days. And then they have, then they have vacation in their contracts as well.
So forgive me, do we have a motion in the second? We did, right, okay. Any other questions, Scott?
Rick, you mentioned, um, contrasting, comparing contrasting with Bangor Brewer. How do the, how do the salaries compare to Bangor Brewer?
It varies from position to position, some that were very strong, some were a little bit lower than we probably should think, because again, let's go to Bangor High, Bangor High has probably 1,200, 1,300 kids, right? Let's say Paul Buckler's been there 10 years, his salary would be quite, quite different than Bill's as a, now moving to a second-year HA. Now, in five years, Bill may accelerate that, but, but again, it depends on the longevity of the person sitting in the position.
Right, you can't compare.
The other thing that we did know about 10 years ago, Scott, the board was concerned about the very topic we were talking about tonight, because our administrative salaries were lower, uh, and matter of fact, my salary was lower, and the board came up with the matrix that we wanted to increase salaries if they were deserving so, to get them, to answer your question more affirmatively, that we were a cluster, because we then were worried about recruiting and retaining administrators.
Was that merit-based?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, I don't, I'm not ashamed by this, when I retired in 2015, I was the highest-paid superintendent state of Maine. Was it because of Rick Lyons, oh, I'd like to have something about merit, but I've been here 25 years. So Rick Lyons has been here 25 years, and Sherry Toll and Brewer one year, how do those people compare, one to 25? So you have a lot of moving parts there, and it's pretty similar to administrative positions as well.
So how did, how did you decide on the 3% versus 2%?
I'd say the 3% usually is, I think it aligns pretty much with the COLA, cost of living, right now about 2.6. But for, but again, for some reason, I think Misses Moore, a couple of years ago, I recommended, and the board approved something higher because of her, because of what we're discussing tonight, I needed to bring her up. I think that particular year, it was 5%. I've had administrators in the past where I've recommended 0.1.
Jessica, you have a question?
Yes, um, Brittany, maybe?
Yes.
Uh, I assume she's part-time?
She's a full-time, .6 school health coordinator and .4 nurse. She's a school health coordinator and nurse.
So she's less than half of her schedule is being a nurse for all the schools?
No, she's just a nurse at, uh, McGraw School, McGraw Elementary.
Okay, so that's the only school that she reports to? Okay.
Yes.
I see.
Any other questions?
Very good questions, folks, they're very good questions. And that's, and also Jessica, I wanted to double check, that's a teacher contract, Brittany's on 184. A teacher contract's 184 days.
Okay.
All those in favor? And you opposed? Tony, are you opposed?
No, I just keep going. Bush can adjourn or... Okay, thank you very much for that support, thank you. And again, if you have any, and I ram a little bit, but if you have any questions on this, you slow it down, and you get on, say, what did he talk about? Give me a call, email me or whatever, because maybe I'm taking a lot of this for kind of casual, but there's a lot to this, folks, there's a lot of, the questions you're asking are great questions, because you're talking about administrative team here, 16 people that run this district. I mean, as I often tell people, you're running a business of $32 million, 31 buses on the road every day, 375 employees, you have, your, your administrative team is, is a very key part of moving this district forward favorably.
So you're gonna discuss stipends for middle school?
Yes, I want to, before I actually ask for your endorsement, I, I gave you a matrix tonight, it's like this. And Dr. Glen Cross, if I'm making any mistake, basically this matrix, and Dr. Glen Cross chairs this stipend review committee, the stipend review committee is charged with looking at the ERPs, established relative position. Position. I inherited that, so I have no idea how that came about. But that IRP value is assigned with every co-curricular and extracurricular using this matrix. What's happened here is we've had a request to adjust the, the value of these two particular co-curriculars. And Dr. Glen Cross and his team is made up of Richard, who else is on your team?
Fred on our team and Bill on our team.
And Bill.
And, and we have two high school teachers.
Thank you. So they look, so they look at their request, they use this matrix, and this example here, they're recommending we make the adjustment of the IRP value of those two co-curriculars. So again, giving back to the, given the question you're asking tonight, how does this come about? This is exactly how it comes about. And the second page of that will give you the definitions and terms to align with how this committee does go about their business. So tonight I'm asking you to increase the IRP value of the noted co-curricular activities.
I didn't see any, except with the actual amount.
The actual amount?
There's nothing in the board package. There's no.
You have that amount?
Well, let me see.
Are the IRP value amounts?
Yeah, they say.
Eighteen to twenty. If it was eighteen, the recommendation was twenty.
Eighteen to twenty, so I'd be about a two-hundred-and-five dollar raise, about.
Which positions were this for?
Pardon me?
Which positions were this for?
It's for, I'm looking at my notes here.
Middle school show choir and jazz band.
Middle school show choir and jazz band.
For both, obviously, both schools.
That's correct, yeah. So if you look at my agenda note twelve B, the stipend for the middle school show choir and middle school jazz band. So we're asking an adjustment of two IRPS per each.
So that equates to two-hundred?
Two-hundred per co-curricular. So that's a total of about four-hundred-and-ten dollars by doing this, yes. Yeah.
So we have a motion from Wally. Do I have a second before we open it up for discussion? Tony has a second. Any questions or further discussions?
That's, that's just a pittance for the amount of time they put in and the results. I mean, they travel all these competitions. I mean, they're putting in way more hours than they're going to pay for. I just want to say that.
Absolutely.
Now, the other thing that may happen, just so you know, when we negotiate, you also negotiate the annual value of the IRP. So we make the number up because I don't have the contract to think of. The IRP right now is about a hundred and three dollars an IRP. We may negotiate that then that becomes a hundred and five dollars. Now that IRP goes from eighteen to twenty, so it's also a built-in through the collective bargaining process there as well. So you can negotiate the value of the IRP in the collective bargaining contract, then you can adjust the IRP by either increasing it, decreasing it through the statutory review committee that we have on tonight.
And that, the contract, the negotiation, the contract is not a problem with changing it?
No, that's not covered by the contract.
The, the contract determines the amount of money per IRP.
Per IRP.
Per IRP.
And then the, the statutory review committee determines how many IRPs it is.
How many IRPs each position is.
Thank you.
Because a lot of contracts are, it's set.
No, this one.
And how many IRPs is it for each?
This one's going from eighteen IRPs to twenty. So eighteen was around, let's say it was a hundred dollars, and it's going from eighteen-hundred to about two-thousand, using that as the proxy.
Out of curiosity, what is our high school jazz band show choir IRP?
I'm just going by memory, but I believe it's like twenty-four or something.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, I can tell.
Yeah. Well, Richard and Fred seem pretty comfortable with the twenty-four.
Twenty-four, gentlemen?
Yeah, I believe it is, yeah. Because that was a point that we considered in looking at, you know, being appropriate.
Yes, twenty-four, correct. Good recall, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, eighteen to twenty-four.
Our highest IRP is forty-eight.
What's that for?
Fred, forty-eight, that's probably football, has football.
Yeah, it's got to be Russ's.
There you go.
Boys ankle?
And one more thing. Also, there's a built-in experiential value. It goes up to twenty-seven percent. So Russ Bartlett, I'll pick on Russ, Russ has been in this position more than eight years. We pay him a hundred and twenty-seven percent of the IRP value because he gets twenty-seven percent bonus because he's been on eight years. So you have, you have a longevity bonus in as well.
Is that the same for all?
Yes. So if you're the, if you're the show choir coordinator and you're in year eight, you're getting a hundred and twenty-seven percent of the IRP.
Which would apply to both of these.
Yes. So you have the, the questions we're asking tonight, you have the value negotiated, you have the adjustment of the statutory review committee, and then you have the longevity factor built in the plus.
So we have a motion in a second on the floor. I have a question, but I'd like to bring it to vote before I ask it because it's not necessarily related to this particular motion. Any other questions about this motion? All those in favor? And Tony's going to abstain because he's not here for the vote. Okay. What my question was is, one of the middle schools, and I can't remember which one, had a volunteer assist with show choir this year. Do you remember who I'm talking about?
Are you thinking about at the high school, Rebecca Perry? Are you thinking about? Is that, is that?
All right, never mind. I'll figure it out and then come back to you next meeting for the question. That's well warned. All right, next. Because I don't know if that's what I'm talking about. The bequest.
Per board policy that we have been discussing, but this one exceeds the level currently. We're asked to receive, thankfully so, eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars given to Handen Academy from Mrs. Kane. Mrs. Kane retired probably my second or third year here after her long impressive career at Handen Academy. So I would ask for the board to accept the eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and I will respond with great appreciation to the estate.
Sue Moore. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
I was going to pick on some of our alumni here. I'm sure Scott and John, you remember her? Do you remember her?
I do, but I did not have, you know, class.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, she probably retired in ninety-five or ninety-six, early off years, so she was there when you hired the high school. Okay.
Where would that money go?
Mr. Tracy, do you have any thoughts yet about maybe where you're spearheading that fund, those funds?
We met with the estate and, and they really don't have earmarked anything. They just would like to see it something that goes towards HA, that we develop the culture as a part of our school. They're not looking for anything they initially thought, well, maybe it'll go towards the commerce department. I'm like, wow, we have that. So it's just a matter of, I'm saying, where's some idea, where's some things, but really they're just saying, we want you to use it, find a way to use it.
Wouldn't it be nice?
There's no restriction on that.
Wouldn't it be nice to provide them with maybe a letter at the end of the year of thanks and also letting them know how we use those funds?
I write on a letter, obviously, on your approval and Bill might talk about it.
How will it, how will it ultimately get decided then where it goes to?
Send the administrative team at the high school and administrative council and say, what's the best choice for it? Something that will benefit the kids for sure.
So we also, just for our, yeah, for our new members, help me with this, Mr. Tracy, we have the Tippett's bequest. It was three-hundred-and-thirty-five, Bill, is that right?
Three-hundred thousand that I'm, that I'm aware of.
I think it's, and they gave us some, we had about approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand